Planning board is now in session.
Planning board is now in session. Karina.
All right, first item on the agenda, first item on the agenda is master plan update. And Mimi Lutrell had a recent visioning forum with MAPC and she'll give a quick follow up. If you'd like to.
Sure. I think the last meeting we discussed the visioning forum, but we can discuss it again. It was on November 11th, about forty people showed up. We're waiting for input on ideas that were expressed during that from MAPC. Where the master plan committee is also meeting again this Wednesday, the fourth, at seven thirty at the senior center. And will be discussing other ideas of how to get more input and reach more people. Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Mills?
You're doing a great job as chairman woman. Thank you.
Add something really quick to that. Shopsey is also, has a consultant on board for updating the housing production plan. And Tom McCulley who is on the master plan committee is also on Shopsey. So at our upcoming meeting, he'll be update, will have kind of like an overlap about what the housing production plan goals are and what's happening at the master plan committee so that we don't miss anything in between.
So as we have ten minutes till our public hearing, we're gonna move the meeting minutes up. Take care of some housekeeping items.
I'd like to make a motion that the planning board approve the meeting minutes for Tuesday, November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, as written.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing, no discussion items. Take a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? None. Four to zero. Okay. Still, let's move the planners' report up until the public hearing. Karina?
I just have a couple of quick things to update the planning board. At the last meeting in November eighteenth, we had a discussion item about the five G small cell policy that's in draft form from the Board of Selectmen working with KP Law. And I was tasked to draft a letter to the Board of Selectmen with the feedback from the planning board members. And I did that and I included Marty Rulahan's comments and Jesse Stein's letter. And then a general synopsis of what was discussed and a summary of how we got there. So that's been submitted and they'll be here, they'll be listening, having a discussion at the Board of Selectmen on one of the next two meetings, I think. Or an upcoming meeting. And Heidi Davis, we keep her in the loop too, so whenever we do something, we let her know. The second thing is, I just wanted to let you know that we got a letter from a consultant that is working on interstate I ninety bridges. That there are three bridges in Southborough where construction, the mass DOT proposes to complete bridge superstructure replacements carrying I ninety over Parkville Road, Corderville Road and Woodland Road in Southborough and Flanders in Westborough. So that's up and coming. If anybody has any questions on that, they can call me and I can give them an update on, more specifically, of what the project includes. But these are turnpike bridges that run through the town of Southborough.
DPW aware of that? Is there gonna be any shutdown of the roads that those go over?
No, this construction phasing and DPW is aware. Every department, I believe, gets a copy of this. It's a notification from the consultant that it's upcoming work. So any town they abut, they, they send it to all the departments. I used to do that. There is a, the Board of Selectmen are hosting their second annual volunteer recognition breakfast on Friday, December thirteenth. So if anybody's interested in stopping by, you don't have to be there the whole time. That's from seven to eight thirty AM on Friday, December thirteenth at the senior center. Just pop in and they wanna just give their thanks to all the volunteers in town on the boards and committees. As you see, Main Street has been paved and just in time before the snow, so everything's running pretty smooth there. I believe the Ken food sign is back in commission.
I did see that it was blue again that they put the cover back. I haven't seen if they turned on the lights.
If the lights yet. I did email them to request confirmation for sure, 'cause I just saw it during the day as well, so. All right, that's all I have for the planners' report.
Any other updates from the board? Seeing as we still have about eight minutes. Okay, it's afterwards.
Make a motion for two minute recess.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? See you in two minutes, or eight minutes, really. Planning board is back in session. Ms. Lutrell.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself from this hearing because I'm an abutter.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is twelve Edgewood Road, scenic road, stone wall removal. Karina?
This is a public hearing notice, so I'll read the public hearing notification, which was filed with the town clerk on November sixth. To Jim, James Hegarty Town Clerk, town of Southborough, seventeen Common Street, Southborough, Mass. oh one seven seven two. Public hearing notice for stone wall hearing. Pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty, Section fifteen C, the Southborough Planning Board will hold a public hearing on December second, two thousand nineteen, at seven fifteen PM in the Thomas J. McAuliffe Hearing Room, located on the second floor of the townhouse, seventeen Common Street, Southborough, Mass. oh one seven seven two, to consider the partial removal of the stone wall at twelve Edgewood Road, which is designated a scenic road in this town of Southborough. The request for stone wall removal was made by Mr. Max Geezy to access the property for construction of a new driveway. Copy of the plans and application can be reviewed at the Southborough Townhouse and the Planning Department during normal business hours. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposal should appear at the location and time designated above. Sincerely, Donald Seymour, Chair, Planning Board. So this evening, we have Mr. Geezy here, who's the property owner, developer of the house that is being built there. He submitted an application on October twenty-fourth, which was filed with the town clerk, November sixth. We posted the legal ad in the newspaper, which was published on November eighteenth and the November twenty-fifth. Information was distributed to the town departments and also the planning board members. We received no town department comments back. We did receive the white mailing receipts and return receipt green cards from the applicant in proper fashion. And which brings us to this evening's meeting. I'd like to just put up on the screen the plan that was submitted with the application. And I just wanna point out that this lot, I did a little bit of research. The lot was created in the sixties and had sat vacant, I believe, for a long time. And it was an A and R that I found on the registry of deeds. So when Mr. Geezy was approached, what happened is I, it was brought to my attention by Conservation, who was concerned with the level of, if there was a threshold being passed for conservation permits. So we worked close together and I was informed that there was a stone wall there. So soon as we found out that the stone wall had been removed, we contacted Mr. Geezy and he reached back out to us to find out what he had to do. So when we knew that happened, we determined that the best route was to mitigate this by having him actually come and do the proper permitting that's required to do stone wall removal on a scenic road. I just wanna point out that Chapter forty, the Mass General Law, Chapter forty, Section fifteen C regarding scenic road designations. One might ask, how does a person know if a stone wall is on the property? So this goes back to the seventies. There was an article on the warrant with a motion to designate certain roads in Southborough as scenic. And then there was another one the following year. So there's a list of specific roads that were actually voted. Edgewood Road happens to be on that list. So when I checked that, that's what helped me determine that this is an appropriate path to mitigate the removal of the stone wall. So we are aware that the stone wall was removed prior to this meeting. So that being said, we did receive the application. We also received an email from, through the town website, from a resident at three A Powder Mill Lane, saying that they received their notification and the purpose is to put in a driveway on the new house. They drove by and saw that the wall was already partially removed and in fact paved. And this all happened in the last, the paving, I think, happened in the last couple of weeks, right?
Last week, yeah.
Yeah, last week. I also had a walk-in resident who also lives nearby, who also expressed his concern about the stone wall being removed and not having the permit. And I explained to him that we were mitigating it in this fashion by having the applicant, the owner come in and apply properly in order to get everything in order. So Max, I guess, that's all I have on that.
So thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
I appreciate your, especially on a snowy night.
Likewise.
So if you can explain, you know, just what you're doing at the site. I know Karina did an overview. I think the biggest piece I know that I'm gonna ask about is the stones that did get removed, where are they now? What'd you do with them? Are they still on the site? Because the stones, my understanding is the stones are part of, they go through the town, part of the town.
Right away.
Right away, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's pretty, it's pretty much the property line, the front property line. So it's about half on our property, half on the town's property, give or take. You can see it kind of goes a little bit back and forth. Up further, it's a little more on our property. So what, and I apologize that I wasn't here before. I didn't realize that it was a scenic road. So we removed a portion of it to access the property, to clear it. And it's also where the driveway is and it's right where she's circling, right there. And so with the, with the stones that we removed, we kind of shored it up and tried to make it look a little better on the sides 'cause it's kind of fallen down and, and a little bit uneven. So you can see some of those there were recently placed, so it gives a little bit more height there. And down a little further, the wall is, it's pretty much gone. So we didn't touch it. Most of the rocks are laying on the town's property. And so I was discussing with Karina, I said we could see about possibly, you know, trying to move those over. And, you know, at least along our property, make the wall look a little better. But yeah, that's what we did with it.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Stein.
Is it okay to have the proponent come up here and point to things on the map?
I think so. So to Andy.
It might be better if we do it on the screen so that anyone who's watching from home on this stormy night can see what you're asking.
Yep. So, Mr. Geezy, how, is that right?
Yes, yes.
How big is the, how wide is the area of disturbance?
It's just over twenty feet from end to end.
So it's a twenty-foot wide driveway, essentially, what you're?
No, the driveway is about sixteen feet there. And what we did, it's a little bit farther than that so that you can plow and people turning in. You don't wanna come right up to the edge. We are, so we're twenty feet here, a little over twenty feet. Eight Edgewood has about a forty-foot opening. And then our next neighbor down is twenty-two Edgewood and they actually don't have a stone wall. So their entire property is open, just about. So we try to make it fit, you know, the character and kind of like what's going on with the road. So I think it, just over twenty feet, it fits in there nicely as far as any of the other houses that do have stone walls and the opening they have.
So when you, when you got your, did all your permitting, did the building department inform you at that time it was a scenic road? And that you would have to be coming before the planning board?
No, they didn't.
The building inspector did not inform you of that?
No.
Okay.
Well, I think we might have, Karina, do you wanna talk to that? It's a little early, but since it's coming up?
Yeah, I spoke to the building commissioner about this issue. Because we asked each other, you know, how does somebody know they have to come in to the planning board for an application for a stone wall or a tree removal? And barring the fact that developers typically come into planning before they do a job and we sit down and we go over things. We also usually find these out during an A and R process. And usually when someone comes in for an A and R, the property gets developed within a year or so after that typically. So on an A and R plan, we require them to show stone walls. So during the A and R process, I point out to the applicant, if you're cutting a driveway through the stone wall and it's on your prop, on town right of way, or straddling the town right of way line, that they need to come back for a stone wall removal permit, for scenic road stone wall. So when it's an A and R that's fresh, they, they get that information. In this case, I pointed out it was a much older A and R, created lot back in the sixties, which has sat there unused for a long, long time. So in recent history, we wouldn't have caught that. So this is, the scenic road aspect is, was from the articles back in the seventies that designate which roads are scenic. There's nothing in the town code that reflects the stone wall removal, except for the application that's provided on our website that indicates that in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty, Section fifteen C, which requires a public hearing if you remove stone wall from town right of way on a scenic road. So it's kind of a leap. It goes from state law, ties into our designation of scenic roads, and we internally commonly know. So the building commissioner said she anticipates putting a little checkbox on the new application. She's gonna remedy that by trying this. Put a checkbox on the applications. If you have a stone wall, you're gonna check it off, which will trigger them to have to come to planning and look at the plan with me. Because we don't often get single-family home projects through planning, you know, single or two-family. So we're gonna try that as a starting point.
Okay. Thanks for the explanation. And for Mr. Mills's question regarding what you've done with the stones, you kind of lost me on that a little bit. You said you've moved them.
Well, so, so where the wall was lower, they placed them on top. So maybe you had one or two, now you have, you know, additional stone on top. So the, the wall is, it's a little higher. You can see some of them placed up on there. Whereas that row, you know, and I don't know exactly which ones are new and which ones aren't. But definitely when you're looking at that, some of those have been placed up there.
Okay. So the stones are all, the stones are all still on the property in effect? They just got moved?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That's it for me. Thanks.
Hi, Mr. Geezy. Thanks for coming in. I would just love you to walk me through the pictures. 'Cause in looking at the pictures, it's, there's some places, it says it's a stone wall, but it's like maybe a couple of rocks.
Yeah, so, and that's, and that's something, and I don't want to, you know, I'm here to talk about our property. And, and I do understand, you know, that my responsibility, yeah. If, if If, if it is, you know, something, so, and if you can flip through the pictures, I'll point out, because we bought it when the lot had already been perked. Now, I think they probably took the machine in right through there and drove up over the stones, which that is down towards 22 Edgewood, and that's in front of our property as well. That's the condition of the wall. If you, if you want to flip, okay. So then you can see that's, now that's to the left. That gives you kind of what we're talking about there. The, the red fire hydrant going past there, that's 22 Edgewood, and there's no Stonewall. This Stonewall is, it was in pretty rough shape in some areas, yeah. And so, but one thing that I'd point out, that this is essentially, you know, they used it for the property lines. And so you could run into something where, you know, even to perk it, you know, that's where I, I'm assuming they went in with the machine. We didn't perk it. We bought it. It had already been perked. But it's something that, that I think that could get, you know, sooner in the process, you know, could be, hey, you know, there's a Stonewall, so you're going to need the, the permit. Maybe they could have drove around and went in and drove over the Stonewall someplace. But I took this picture. So what this is showing, the white house there is the new house that we're building. And that's 22 Edgewood to the right. The Stonewall ends right around, just past that telephone pole there. And then past it is, is the area that I took a closer picture showing that the wall is almost non-existent. That's just a little bit closer up.
So that's the property?
Yes.
Here's the property here, and the Stonewall here.
Yep. And just past that, just past the red fire hydrant is where it, it goes almost to non-existent there for a little bit.
So do you have your certificate of occupancy yet for the house?
We're, no, we're under construction.
How, what's the percentage, would you say?
Percentage?
Yeah.
Well, we just got done drywalling, so I'd say it's probably 70%.
Okay, so thank, thank you.
And this is, this is 8 Edgewood, and that's showing their opening there. So from Stonewall end to Stonewall end, they're at right, right about 40 feet there for their wall opening.
And your property's to the right over here?
Correct, yeah, yeah. We're the next, next house down from, from 8. That's another, that's, now that's, that's the same picture from a different angle. You can see the white house. That's us there, just to the left. And again, I took this angle here to show the, the opening of the Stonewall there, which is about 40 feet.
Right here?
Yes.
And back to the actual cut.
So did I hear you say in the beginning that you are going to try and replace the Stonewall?
They've already, what was, some of those up on top there, they just got stacked up. And some of them are used to kind of shore it up so that it's, it's not, you know, going to topple over.
So aesthetically, you're going to try and make it look appeasing to whoever might buy the house, I'm assuming, anyway?
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah. But this is, so this is after we've already added some to it over here, and then we added on the other side. Where I said that, that we, and, and I don't know to the extent, if you can go back to the picture of where it's almost, almost gone, and you can see that the stone's kind of laying on the town, yeah. So there, and it, there's not a lot there, but if, if, you know, we're happy to try and, you know, shore it up a little bit to the extent we can. We won't have a machine on, so it'll be these, and when they get big, they get heavy quick. But I'll, I'll do what I can, and it'll probably have to be in the spring because unless we, you know, get a nice melt. But we, you know, to try to make the wall look a little better.
So thank you for the explanation, and again, for coming in to go through this. And I did talk to Don, who couldn't be here tonight. He said, you know, that they have had in the past, I'm not saying you had anything to do with this, I'm just giving some historical reference for anyone who might be watching or those in the room, that there have been instances where walls have been completely removed, the stone taken away, and the planning board has actually made the applicant put it back. Unfortunately, it's not the same stone, and it might not be the same characteristics because it might have been chipped and everything out. And just what has happened historically in some cases. Personally, I appreciate you saying that, first, that the stone is already there or has stayed there. I've learned as my tenure on the board that the, some of the stone here in town is actually labeled "Southborough Stone", which is, was unique and created through the glaciers. That's why it's rounded, and a lot of people think it looks like every other Stonewall, but it actually is labeled "Southborough Stone". So it is important to keep. The second piece too, I think the historical characteristics of a Stonewall goes with the overall vision of the town and is important. And it's, it's a good piece to keep that rural feel, community. Remember our past from the farming community that it once was. In any case, I think, you know, had this been, you know, earlier in the process before you removed the Stonewall, I don't think there would have been any question. 20 feet, I asked the town planner as well, like, what's the normal opening that we do for driveways? Said between 16, 20, in some cases, like you said, yes, 40, 40 feet. So I don't think you've gone anywhere beyond the bounds of what's reasonable. Again, the stone's there, and I appreciate you referencing that you're willing to sure up the wall.
Yes. One thing I just want to say on that is, it, I don't, you know, I, again, I'm, we got to, you know, foot us snow out there now. I don't want to, I don't, I don't want to overpromise and make you guys think that it's going to be looking just like the rest of it, but, but I'm happy to...
Let me finish. I think, I think I'm going to be aligned with you.
Okay.
Sure up the Stonewall with the stone that's there and stone that might be on the property to make the wall consistent with the rest of it. I'm not asking that you make it, you know, brand-new.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't, yeah, I don't think, I don't think I'll get the height that we got, say, right next to the driveway.
Understood.
But we'll, we'll certainly, you know, try and pull them over.
Yeah. My preference is that you don't add any stones from outside.
Just leave it? Or do you want to, you want to try and pull them back over? I mean, it...
Just, we would, I think what we would like you to do is use the stones that are on the property.
That are laying there, yeah, yeah.
Not, not bringing stone from outside.
Right, right, yeah, no, no, that's, that's what it, just, just the ones that are laying down there.
It doesn't have to mean, the whole point is it's a scenic, you call it, you know, historic road, basically. So, yeah, we're not asking for, to build up the wall.
Right, okay, yeah.
Just, just use the stone that's, that's already on the property.
And if there, there are stones that have obviously rolled forward or rolled back, that you could roll back to a wall, a drywall. By no means am I personally asking that you put concrete in there or anything like that. Make it back to its rural look and feel that it once was is, I think, what the rest of the board would be looking for as well. So if there were other stones on the property that you feel that would, that were natural to the property, that are in the middle of the property that you feel, oh, this would look good on the wall? Yeah, if you want to move that over, that's fine. But like, I think Mr. Stein said, not, please don't bring in, you know, smashed rock from some other project that doesn't look or feel at all like what's there, and it looks out of place.
Gotcha, yeah.
And I think personally, that would look best for the, for the, for the overall scenic road, for the town, for yourself, and for the neighbors.
Yep.
Any other questions? So is there a motion to, any questions from the public? Do we have to close the public hearing?
You make a motion to close, yeah.
So a motion to close the public hearing?
So I'd like to make the motion to close the public hearing for the 12 Edgewood Road Scenic Road Stonewall Removal.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Closed? Passes three to nothing. Is there a motion?
So I'd like to make a motion that the board approve the partial, the, sorry, the alteration of the Stonewall located at 12 Edgewood Road for applicant Mr. Max Giezy, trustee of Edgewood Nom- of Edgewood Nominee Trust owner for a Stonewall opening of 20 feet for a driveway as per the plan entitled "As-Built Survey of MAP 15 Lot 12B Prepared by Levec Geometrics, Inc.," dated October 10th, 2019, and submitted by the applicant and attached to this decision. It is understood that the removed stones will be used to repair/rebuild portions of the wall along the balance of the roadway.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks again, but we appreciate everything you guys do.
Thanks a lot.
We'll be filing a decision letter with the town clerk, and then I'll get back to you because you probably have to pick it up and do something with that. Okay.
Thanks for your help, Karina. She was, she was great in helping me navigate the process.
Greatest.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You guys have a good night.
Next item discussion, the Light Bylaw Working Group Update. Karina.
Just want to quickly update the board that the working group for the lighting bylaw, which is Destin Heilman, Marnie Houlihan, and Sarah Hekker, my new assistant, are still currently working on the draft bylaw, and we'll have more information at the next meeting.
Any questions? All right. Next discussion item is the Safe Plan Review Bylaw.
Same situation at the last meeting. We were tasked to do a little bit more research, and we will be providing an update on the, any revisions to the draft bylaw at the December 16th meeting.
Great. So planners' report, we already went through, approval of minutes, we already did. Is there any questions from the public? Can you get in the corner over there? There's one, one person is trying to hide there. There he is, yeah, there he is. No questions from the public? All right. So next item, let's see. We're actually going to vote to go into executive session by roll call. The planning board will enter into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, C. 30a, Section 21, Exception 3, to discuss the strategy with respect to the planning, pending litigation in the case of the Watershed Investment Corp. Planning versus a planning board, Land Court Doc. Number 19MISC00052, where an open meeting may, oh, 2-2, where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the planning board, and the chair so declares, and to seek the advice of legal counsel not to return to public session. Any questions? So this is a roll, roll call vote. All those in favor? Mr. Stein?
Stein, yes.
Luttrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
And Mills, yes. And we will not be returning to public session afterwards. So thank you for all those who came. Appreciate it.